I will now call the public hearing of December 7th, 2021 to order. This meeting is convened by electronic means as such council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For council members participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on and let the clerk know if you are leaving the meeting for purposes of confirming quorum. Council members are required to... Council members are required, or sorry, council members are reminded that in accordance with section 1413 of the procedure bylaw, members must enable their video to confirm quorum. If council members attending by electronic means lose connection during any portion of the hearing, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council members lose connection during the voting process, staff will get you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process. The contact information has been circulated to you. Members of the public can view the proceedings via live stream and YouTube link which will be tweeted out at Van City Clerk. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional and unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Slaywithtooth people. We thank them for having cared for this land and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. I also want to take a moment to recognize the immense contributions of the City of Vancouver staff who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. And I'll note that Mayor Stewart has a leave of absence this evening, and as such, I as deputy mayor will be chairing the meeting. City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Stewart has a leave of absence. Councillor Carr, Councillor De Genova is in chair, Councillor Frye, Councillor Swanson.
Maybe on mute.
Councillor Swanson's not on the line yet. Councillor Hardwick? Councillor Hardwick's not on the line yet. Councillor Weeb?
Present.
Councillor Boyle?
Present.
Councillor Domnado? Councillor Bly?
Present.
And Councillor Kirby Young. You have quorum, Deputy Mayor De Genova.
Thank you. Before we begin, I have some announcements. The public may participate by speaking in person, by phone, or by submitting written comments to council. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online web form at This link will also be tweeted out. Those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak only if those represented are also present on the phone or in person and must not be speakers themselves. Speakers who pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live fleet feed has a slight delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next so the clerk may advance your slides. I also want to note the City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including the utmost respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first name, last name, role, or title. A reminder that council's role at a public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant, or technical advice from staff, but should save debate or after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from speakers, council may, one, approve the application in principle, two, refuse the application, or three, refer the application to staff for further consideration. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene this meeting on Wednesday, December 15th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. We're on to our first item, miscellaneous amendments concerning various CD1 bylaws. Does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on item one? Seeing none, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability to make miscellaneous amendments to the zoning and development bylaw to improve clarity, update references, correct inadvertent errors or omissions, and improve the administration of the bylaws. No correspondence has been received on this application since referral to public hearing.
Thank you. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 94189, and then pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will also be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. We have Nick Danford, rezoning planner, rezoning center, planning, urban design, and sustainability, here to present the application. Okay, we're just going to pause for a moment while we wait to make sure that all of the mics for the presentation are working so that we can make sure that the public has access to this presentation as well. But for purposes of... Yes, point of procedure. Okay, I'd need a second for that. Okay, and I'm just going to call for verbal vote first. If there is any single vote in opposition, we'll move to recorded vote. All in favor, please say yea. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Council appreciates the presentation but has decided not to hear it tonight. And now I'm just going to check with the clerk to make sure that we don't have any speakers, council. Just one moment. Are there any questions from council to staff, first of all? Seeing no one on the queue, we will now hear from the public. And I don't see anyone on the speakers list at the moment. I'll just ask the clerk. Do we have anyone on the speakers list?
No speakers on the line.
No speakers on the line. Okay, so council, I'm going to do a first call. If there are any speakers to this, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 94189 before the close of the speakers list. And as we've mentioned, the phone number has been tweeted out. If there's any additional speakers, even if you're not registered to speak...
No speakers.
If there's any speakers in chambers or outside, please come forward to the podium.
No speakers, chair.
Thank you. And seeing no additional speakers, we will have a five-minute recess to allow people to call in as we traditionally do. So we will come back at 6:43. Please, council, come back at 5:43 to ensure we have quorum. Thanks. Hi, Mike. All right, we're back. Clerk, do we have any speakers who have called in to speak?
No speakers, chair.
Okay, seeing as there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Do we have a motion? Or sorry, do we have questions to staff?
No questions and seeing none, move the recommendations.
Thank you. Do we have a second, Councillor Kirby Young? Councillor Carr, seconds? And is there any debate? Seeing none, I will call a vote, council.
Swanson here, could I have a vote assist in favor?
Councillor Bly also needs a vote assist in favor.
Also, Weeb needs a vote assist in favor.
Me, three.
Okay, and that passes? With none in opposition. Okay, council, we are now on to item number two on the agenda, CDI, sorry, CD1 rezoning, 534 to 550 Camby Street. Does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on item number two? Seeing none, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by MCMP Architects to rezone 534 to 550 Camby Street from downtown district to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a 22-story commercial office building with a height of 92.9 meters and a floor space ratio of 17.35 are proposed. The application also seeks to add the Cleland Kent Building at 534 Camby Street to a C-listed heritage building to the Vancouver Heritage Register. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing. Nine pieces of correspondence in support, six pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thank you. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 94189 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. We now have, or council, we have Nick Danford, rezoning planner, rezoning center, planning, urban design, and sustainability, here to present the application. Please go ahead.
Great, thanks, Councillor De Genova. Good evening, council. I'm Nick Danford, rezoning planner. So on the agenda, we have a proposal for a 22-story commercial office building that includes partial heritage retention at 534 or 550 Camby Street. The site's located on the east side of Camby Street, mid-block between Pender and Dunsmere. This is right on the east edge of downtown, close to Gastown. The site's currently zoned DD, or downtown district, and is surrounded by similarly zoned properties. The downtown district zone in this area generally allows for conditional building heights up to 450 feet with a maximum density of seven FSR. Surrounding developments range from four to 12 stories. The site is bounded by lanes on three sides and is occupied by three two-story commercial buildings. One of the buildings, the Cleland Kent Building located at 534 Camby, has been evaluated as a category C building and is eligible for the Heritage Register. The site's located in the Victory Square area of downtown, right across Camby Street from VCC's downtown campus. Victory Square Park is located just to the north at the end of the block. Chinatown Sky Train Station is a block away, and two other transit stations are within a 10-minute walk. There are also a few childcare facilities located in the area. The project's being considered under the enabling rezoning policy for the CBD and CBD shoulder. The area of policy in which this site is located is intended for commercial and office use intensification. The project also responds to the MetroCore Jobs and Economy Land Use Plan that seeks to ensure an increase of availability of future commercial space. The heritage retention component of the proposal also responds to the city's recently adopted heritage policies. The proposal is a 22-story, 302-foot in height, commercial office building with an FSR of 17.35. The application includes the retention of the front, north side, and partial rear facades of the Cleland Kent Heritage Building on-site. The new office building is proposed to extend above the heritage facades. As part of Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID, it's expected that 1,073 jobs would result from a development of... 1,073 jobs would result from a development of a building of this type and scale. There we go.
Okay. Just making sure, thank you.
Thank you. Go on to the next, on the next slide. There we go. So prior to the existence of the Cleland Kent Building, this site and the surrounding area was home to a number of Black families during the early 20th century, including a boarding facility where Joe Forte, the city's first lifeguard, called home. As the area was redeveloped for commercial uses, Black families were displaced and residential uses were no longer permitted. The Cleland Kent Building that stands on the site today is a two-story masonry building constructed in 1925. The building is valued for its vernacular, commercial architecture, and the role it played in the development of Victory Square area as a center for the newspaper business. The statement of significance and conservation plan were reviewed by the Heritage Commission in 2020. The commission supported the addition of the building to the register as a category C resource. As a condition of enactment, a restrictive covenant would be registered to secure the heritage conservation and ongoing maintenance of the building's facades. The covenant would also require the owner to provide and install an interpretive plan or artwork that marks the site's historical association with the Black community and the building's connection to the Victory Square area. Through the application process, staff considered shadowing impacts from the proposed buildings on the nearby public realm. Shadowing impacts from the proposed building on Victory Square were assessed at the usual equinoxes and solstices between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM. The building's massing has been shaped to minimize shadowing onto Victory Square. The sculpted tower would shadow a portion of the south corner of the park in the early afternoon hours at the equinoxes demonstrated in the two images second from the right. Additionally, despite no shadowing policy on Victory Square for November 11th, Remembrance Day, staff also assessed the shadow impacts for the duration of the annual ceremony given its cultural significance. Shaping of the tower has also mitigated shadowing onto the park for the duration of the ceremony, except for a portion of the west corner of the park at 11:30, demonstrated on the, in the bottom right image on the screen. Staff have determined that the shadow impact is supportable, given the short duration, short duration at the end of the ceremony. A virtual open house was held in January and February of this year. Seventy-seven pieces of correspondence were received through the rezoning process. Some folks supported the building size, neighborhood fit, and welcomed the additional office space, while others felt that the height and the density were too great and were concerned about the impact on views and access to sunlight. A fixed commercial linkage contribution of nearly $2.5 million is expected. This, that, along with the DCLs and public art fee, this project would yield nearly $8.5 million in public benefits. Staff do recommend that the proposed 22-story office building at five, three, four to five, fifty, Camby Street be approved, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B. The project meets the intent of the rezoning policy for the CBD and also responds to the MetroCore Jobs and Economy Land Use Plan that seeks to ensure future availability of commercial space. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. I'm. Does that, does council have any questions? Okay, and we do. One second, moving to my list here. I'm just gonna read this out before we start with the list, because we do have speakers to this, but if there's anyone who's not on, on the speakers list who wants. Oh, my apologies, one second. Thanks, council, it threw me off, we didn't have an applicant team last time. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
Yes, we are.
Are there any? Please go ahead. Do you have any? Or do you have a presentation?
I do, we have, we have a brief presentation.
Okay, and I'll ask the clerks to make sure that's up on the screen.
Can you see that, we can go ahead?
And?
That's great.
Please go ahead when you're ready.
Okay, well, good evening, your worship and distinguished members of council. My name is Dan Cooper, I'm the VP of Development for PC Urban Properties, and we are thrilled to bring forward to you tonight our, our project of five, fifty, Camby. I'm joined tonight by our architect, Mark Thompson from MCM, as well as our CEO, Brent Satchin from PC Urban, and Jeff Frank, Senior Vice President Leasing from Quadrial, our partners for this project. Together collectively, we bring a strong resume and commitment to delivering meaningful job space throughout the city. And the five, fifty, Camby project is all about jobs, jobs next to transit in the downtown core. Locating less than a block from Stadium Sky Train Station, the, the project ticks virtually every policy box that applies. And we have had great engagement through this process. As new neighbors, it is fundamental to everything we do to integrate into the social and historic fabric of the community. And through our efforts, we have met with most, if not all, of the neighbors and made relationships with any of them, including the Friends of Victory Square, which is a group involved in the rehabilitation of the park back in 2002, the DC Regiments Association, responsible for Remembrance Day ceremonies, as well as the African Descent Society, representing some of the early Black Canadian history on the site and in the neighborhood. We've met with other community groups, businesses and landlords such as the VCC, as well as the Metro Living Strata Next Door, to review our plans, listen to some of their concerns, as well as share in the revitalization that this project brings, which is in line with policy. The Vancouver office market is going, undergoing considerable growth and is just catching up. As one of the fastest tech growth, tech growth markets in North America, it has the lowest overall vacancy rate and is well poised for a post-pandemic recovery and is considered undersupplied currently from a market perspective. Located a block away from the Post, also being developed by our partners, Quadrial, which will soon be home to Amazon's Canadian headquarters and home to 7,000 workers and significant retail amenities, the downtown south or crosstown area is undergoing considerable change and emerging as a cultural and innovation district that will not only bring meaningful jobs and urban vibrancy, but will lead to economic diversification and resiliency for years to come. And now I'd like to pass it over to our architect, Mark Thompson, to take us through the design, and we're open to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dan, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So as, as Nick mentioned, shadow impacts and shadow mitigation was a significant generator of the, of the form, as was the heritage building which is onsite. There are two view cones that cross the site, which limits the height of the, ultimate height of the building. In the second diagram, you can see how the extrusion of the site goes up to those view cones. And then we carved major pieces of that extrusion away in response to the shadows both at equinox and at the time of the ceremony on November 11th. The heritage building, the Cleland Kent Building is a significant element of our streetscape and having a deference to that at street level was important, so we set the building back great. We articulated the two volumes that are created by this carving away and then also terraced the, the mass to provide indoor and outdoor amenity that's really an opportunity created by that carving. And that all defines the, the, the building shape and the design that we've been working on with the city over the last year, year or two. Next slide, Dan, please. As Dan mentioned, the program is predominantly workspace with some amenities, both interior and exterior, out onto those terraces. And at grade, there is a building lobby facing Camby and also retail flanking either side of that lobby to animate the street. Next slide, please. And this is a view of the, the, the public face of the building at grade with the lobby in the middle and retail element either side, one contained within the Cleland Kent Building, the other one more directly off, off the lobby and to the street. But again, enhancing and providing streetscape and animation along the street, including weather protection, was, was a primary goal of, of the design of how the building sits at grade and how it meets the ground. Next slide, please. The building articulation was really defined by two sets of elements. One is its context, both to the heritage building onsite and the heritage-dominated context of Victory Square that we are, that we are in and are neighbor to, but also sustainability. So the elements that you see on, on the building both provide solar, control in certain aspects, and contextual relationship in, in other aspects as we, as we move and articulate the building and the two forms that are created by this mass. Next slide, please. And as I mentioned earlier, the Cleland Kent Building and our response to that building was important. We've, we sort of held the building, the, the new building up and away from the Cleland Kent Building, so that we're able to very quickly and easily identify what the heritage elements are separated from the modern elements surrounding it. The site is unusual in so much as it has lanes on three sides of the site, so it's bounded by laneways on three sides. Two things about that, first, it, it, it means the heritage building actually presents itself with three elevations, which is unusual within the heritage context, so we're able to display a, a whole building rather than just a front facade. And secondly, we have the opportunity to introduce public realm and enhance the public realm in those lanes to create this sort of secondary set of laneways that, that we, we see as an important enhancement to both the safety, security, and animation of this area. Next slide. So this is a, an aerial shot of the building, you see the heritage building, how the rest of the building is disposed, the terraces, the amenity, and the upper and lower volumes created by this response to sunlight on Victory Square. That's my presentation, thanks.
Thanks very much. Are there any questions from council to staff of the applicant team? And please note, council, that this is your only opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. Is he, Councilor Dominado? Councilor Dominado, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and questions are probably mostly best directed to the applicant. My first question is just around the retention preservation of the heritage building, I think that's fantastic. Could you just elaborate on what will actually be in that space? Will it also be workspace, office space, or is it being used as an amenity space? I just wasn't clear on that.
Dan, would you like me to take that one?
Yes, please.
Yeah, please.
Okay, so we have, the, the lobby of the building is at grade in the middle of the, of the block on Camby, and you walk into the lobby, there also is a separate entry into the Cleland Kent Building from the street as well. So what we, what we envisage is some sort of retail element. We think it's, it's, it's really primed for some sort of food and beverage use, probably on two levels.
Okay, thank, thank you for clarifying that. And then you referenced the terraces and amenity spaces, and it's really interesting design, will those be only accessible to the commercial or office tenants, or will they be publicly accessible?
Those are accessible to the commercial office tenants, that's the usual situation with amenities within office buildings within the downtown core.
Thank you. And just my last question, because in your presentation and staff presentation, you spoke to the need for office and workspace in the downtown core, do you have interested tenants? I know you may not be able to name them, but is there, have you sort of seen an appetite for this, this particular space?
I'm gonna let Dan or maybe Jeff answer that question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Jeff, Jeff here, I would say we don't have any specific tenants, but I think we certainly are seeing an emerging demand from technology companies and an overall strengthening sentiment about returning to work, so we are expecting that 20, 2022 and 2023 will, will see a resurgence of demand for, for office, but nothing specific at the moment.
Thank you very much, that's all my questions, Chair.
Thanks, more questions from Councilor Kirby Young? Councilor Kirby Young, questions to staff or the applicant?
Question's the applicant, and it's this, and I'm wondering. Sorry if my brain froze for a second there, long day. I'm wondering if you have changed anything with respect to how you approach designing a commercial building like this after COVID, and is it anything to do with sort of like motionless door openers, use of copper surfaces? I'm just curious in terms of, you know, you're still providing open spaces and then how their demise is up to the individual tenants, I'm just wondering if there's been any sort of changes with respect to building design, HVAC, airflow, filtration, anything like that?
I can, I can answer that question. So one, yes, yes, the answer is yes, and it's a number of different levels of, of change that we've made. To talk about ventilation, we have operable windows, which is a newer thing within office buildings to, to create operable windows, which, which gives each occupant more control over their environment and the amount of fresh air that they get. We have floor-by-floor ventilation with MERV filtration, so we've, we've changed the filtration system, we've increased the amount of ventilation and given more occupant control. Yes, there's smart building technology that can help with that ventilation, and it's really linked to the operable windows, because the, the, the mechanical ventilation and the, and the passive ventilation need to work together. We have enhanced end-of-trip facilities for bicycles or people or pedestrians or riders or rollers. That includes individual end-of-trip facilities on each office floor, so there's more privacy and more control over your environment, rather than in a, in a, in a group situation, you can choose that, the, the group end-of-trip facility, or you can choose a more private, more individualized end-of-trip facility on each floor. There's also unitized washrooms, which again provides more confidence and control over your environment when you're washing your hands or, or cleaning as, as well. And then you notice that we have the, the interior amenities linked to outdoor amenities, so again, the occupants can go to an outdoor amenity so that they have more access to light air and, and fresh air within, within the project. When it comes to the, the, the design of the office spaces in, in particular, that's really down to the tenants. We do quite a lot of this work and we are seeing trends towards more distance and more meeting rooms, and like I said before, more of this individualized control over things like the environment or, or your day-to-day use within the building, so a little bit more individualization is occurring, and we're seeing more distance in terms of office layout, but that's a general trend, and so what we do is, is that's really the tenants that come and make their own decisions regarding how they lay out the space. Is that enough?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a very fulsome answer, and that's, and I appreciate that, it's fascinating. With respect to the heritage facade retention, were there any specific challenges that this project presented with respect to that, or not so much?
Not really, we, we, we've done quite a lot of heritage retention, and currently we're working on the Post, which is the largest heritage retention in the city, and we've, we've been working in Gastown quite a bit. It's not a very large heritage building vertically, it's two, two and a half stories, so it, it should be relatively straightforward, that, that, the, the way in which you retain it, the technology that you need to use to do that is, is pretty worked out now. Also, we do have lane access on three, on two of the three sites, which is very helpful.
Okay, thank you, I'll leave it there, appreciate it.
Council, we, questions to staff of the applicants?
Yeah, question to the applicant, looking at the natural assets, it talks a little bit about vines going up, a bit of the facade, but also it looks like there's trees on some of the setbacks on the upper floors, can you talk a little bit about kind of the natural elements that you're putting towards this building?
Sure, so I'm not a landscape architect, so I'm probably, I'm not gonna talk about species, but I will talk about some of the principles that, that we, that we gave. What we wanted to do is, is ensure that, 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 that outdoor environment does have a number of different characters and has as different sort of areas within it, both for working as well as for breaks or gaps in between work. We're finding, as part of COVID, that people are working in all sorts of different environments and. and like to have that ability. So there's a number of different natural environments created on those different decks. There's also some urban agriculture elements that we have as well. But the trees are important, we think, because it will attract birds, for instance, and create that sort of diversity of environment, so it isn't just a big flat patio.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. And is that all your questions, councillor Weeb?
Yeah.
Okay.
Point of privilege.
Oh, yes.
Swanson here. I'm having extreme tech issues, but I would like to ask a question.
Okay, I'll add you to the queue. Did you need to be added to the queue here?
Sure, can you tell me how many are in front of me?
No one else. Councillor Weeb just finished, so you can go ahead and ask your questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm wondering to the staff. I see that there's a commercial linkage fee of 2.45 million, I guess, in exchange for increasing the FSR from seven to seventeen. Is that a little bit low for a commercial linkage fee?
Now, I'll ask staff to respond to that.
Thanks for the question, councillor Swanson. So the lower fee would probably be a result of the start, the base density that's allowable within this area of the downtown district. So you have a starting point that's a bit higher, so that would be why there's that smaller commercial linkage fee.
Okay, second question is, are there any existing businesses that would be displaced?
I'll refer that question over to the applicant. They'll have a better idea of the businesses that are located there currently.
And could the applicant respond to that?
Yep, we confirm that there's no existing businesses that have tenure beyond the intended start of our construction, should this go through approvals.
But would they like to stay if they could?
We have actually had, we have not had any indication of that, and we've had a lot of communication with those existing tenants onsite.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, so council, we will now hear from the public. And I'm just going to note that if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 94189 pound. And that is before the close of the speakers list. The phone number, again, as I'd noted before, will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chambers, please come forward to the podium. And we do have registered speakers to this item, council. And the first speaker is Stephen Travis, who is participating by phone. Do we have Stephen on the line?
Hello, council.
Go ahead. You have five minutes to speak.
Good evening, acting mayor, Dejeanova council, city staff and Vancouver residents. Again, my name is Steve Travis, and I am one of the founding members of the Friends of Victory Square, along with Cam Caskard, Richard Evans, Konstantin Papas, Archie Stacey, and L. Dejeanova. And tonight I will be speaking in favour of this development proposal. A quick bit of history, just to give some context. I became involved with the Friends of Victory Square as the head of safety and security for Vancouver Community College from 1994 to 2002. In the 1990s, those that were around at that time may remember that Victory Square had fallen into disrepair, and our students actually did not feel safe coming to class. The Friends of Victory Square at that time put forward a design concept to the park board, focused on returning the park to its former glory as a place of remembrance and a safe gathering place. The design focused on lighting up the old city hall maple trees and adding commemorative World War I helmet light standards that are throughout the park. The beautiful park that we enjoy today and the light you see was part and due to the efforts of our group 20 years ago. In February 2020, the Friends of Victory Square were approached by the developer for 550 Canby to provide input into the public art element of their development proposal. Since that initial meeting, the Friends of Victory Square have met a number of times with the developer, and we have provided input into the building design, laneway, and the significance of the Victory Square neighbourhood. I have been very impressed with the genuine interest and respect the developer has shown for our input. They have been very open to our ideas, such as tying the significance of the parade route between BD Street Armory and Victory Square Park into their design concept. They've also made changes, as was mentioned, to the mashing of their building to minimise the shadow on the park, specifically around the November 11 ceremony. I believe the developer is committed to honouring the historical facade of the building and incorporating design elements which will be in keeping with the military and remembrance aspects of this important and historical neighbourhood. The developer is also open to having some of the public art funding go towards some sort of commemoration in the park itself, such as perhaps honouring Victoria Cross recipients. As a bit of interest, I currently work for another city of Metro Vancouver municipality, and I do get to spend a significant amount of time with city councillors as they deliberate on development proposals. From what I have witnessed firsthand from PC Urban, this applicant, I can say that I have been very impressed with their interest in achieving community goals that go well beyond their own development proposal approval. For these reasons, I would recommend that council support this development proposal. It will not only benefit future occupants of this building, but I believe they will be an important partner in the neighbourhood as a whole. Thank you.
Thanks very much. There aren't any questions for you, but thank you for making the time to speak to council. Our next speaker is Farid Rohani, honorary Colonel, British Columbia Regiment. Colonel Rohani, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you very much.
Please go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members, and thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Dejeanova. My name is Farid Rohani. I'm the honorary Colonel of the British Columbia Regiment and a member of the B.C. Regimental Association. We are located at 620 BD Street Drill Hall, a Victorian-era building with the longest ties to the neighbourhood. Needless to say, we have had a longstanding connection to Victory Square Park through my involvement with the B.C. Regiment and the association, past soldiers that have served, and remembrance of those from our regiment that perished fighting evil. I would like first to acknowledge and applaud PC Urban for their engagement of our regimental association, members, past and present commanding officers, and frequent, genuine engagement with members of the Friends of Victory Square. As you may already be aware, its makeup is a group of volunteers who have been stewards of this important park for many years. While many have a particular connection to the annual commemoration event on November 11, including our very good late friend, Cam Catheart, who was the recognised voice of many Remembrance Day ceremonies. We also have an interest in this park becoming a welcoming, inclusive, safe place for the public all year round. PC Urban first reached out to members of this group to better understand our use and connection to Victory Square, understand it, and discuss potential shadow impacts, and furthermore, to discuss the proposed public realm around 550 Canby. Following initial discussions, our conversation then evolved into ways PC Urban could potentially support improved commemoration at and around Victory Square. On the item of shadows, which we have discussed frequently, we have reviewed this extensively with PC Urban. Their team and architects can confirm, we have no issue with the very minor shadow impact on the southwest corner on November 11. Most of you have probably attended our ceremonies on November 11, and it is extremely rare that we are not in cloud cover, rain, or other issues, snow, et cetera. Our serving members are not focused on weather, however, ever. Frankly, those who have served are used to unpleasant weather, but rather the ceremony and the act of remembrance on November 11. Secondly, we have been working with PC Urban and their public art consultants on some exciting ideas to improve the commemoration along the three alleyways surrounding the property. We are used as staging areas, excuse me, which are used as staging areas for the procession on November 11, such as panels on the ground or lighting above. We look forward to these ideas being further developed and have confidence in a quality outcome, given the volunteers and experts involved, but more so hearing our input as custodians of the area. Finally, I will just note that the building architecture itself is great. It's handsome in design, and new people that will work and visit the building will bring a new vibrancy to the street, which is really welcome. Thank you, and I hope council approves this rezoning this evening.
Thank you, and I have to offer my sincere apologies. I accidentally, council, had skipped over speaker number two. And I'd like to apologize to speaker number two, Richard Evans, who I hope is still on the line, former chair, local building owner, and friend of Victory Square. Richard, are you on the line?
Hello.
Hi, and my apologies for skipping over you by accident. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Deputy Mayor and council, thank you for this opportunity to provide comment on the rezoning application for 534 to 550 Canby Street. I speak in support of the application. As mentioned, my name is Richard Evans, and I am part owner of the Architecture Centre, a heritage building located one block north of the subject's site. I am also co-founder and former chair of the Friends of Victory Square, a group who received a Vancouver Heritage Award in 2007 for their success in advocating for improvements to the park that reinforced the historic significance of the public space and provided supports for ceremonies to honour and remember those who have faced conflict and experienced personal impacts on our behalf. I note that the application has received support with conditions from both the Urban Design Panel and Vancouver Heritage Commission. I also note that the project is right on the edge of downtown high-rise forms of development and the lower building forms of the heritage districts to the north and east. The rezoning will permit an increase to the permitted floor space ratio and height of the building to bring it more in line with recent developments to the south and west, such as Amazon's new development of the former post office site. The project makes sense from this point of view and is well-located for access from the Stadium Chinatown Skytrain Station. As an owner of an asset in the area, I think that the proposed development will benefit both me personally and the area generally. As a person with considerable personal interest in volunteer investment in Victory Square Park, I know that over the past year, the development team has reached out to the Friends of Victory Square, and my assessment is that this engagement has been very respectful and robust. The building has been set back, as been mentioned, at the top to minimise shadow impacts on the park, and the public art programme has specifically addressed the importance of Victory Square Park, and is built on the historic and commemorative themes that the Friends lobbied hard for years ago. I, and my friends, colleagues, as you've heard, applaud these measures and are grateful in particular for the care taken in minimising shadow impacts on the park. This will benefit both the park on Remembrance Day and for the public use of the park over the year generally. My concluding comments have to do with the public art programme and how the programme could potentially be expanded to include ongoing legacy programme support for places like Victory Square Park. A number of years ago, the Friends of Victory Square were able to secure support to partner with Coastal Jazz and Blue Society to sponsor performances in the park as part of the Jazz Festival. And for a number of years, the Friends hosted Lunar New Year's activities in support of Vancouver Chinese New Year celebrations and parade. These kinds of things are impossible for volunteer organisations to sustain without ongoing staff and administration support. I believe that there is considerable public benefit merit in considering legacy programme funding in addition to fixed capital funding for ongoing arts programmes and events in key public spaces throughout the city, and in particular Victory Square Park. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. There are no questions for you? But appreciate that, and again, sorry for missing you before calling speaker three. Speaker number four is Gary Jobin, a director of Blade Runners. Gary, are you on the line? We have Gary.
Yes, I am. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. You have five minutes to speak to council. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor and council. My name's Gary Jobin. I'm a longtime resident of Vancouver's downtown east side. And for the last 25 years, I've had the pleasure of recording a programme called Blade Runners. Our programme, as you know, is to help street-involved youth build careers in the construction trades. And we're in full support of PC Urban's proposal here. We'll take many kids, we'll provide employment for many kids between the ages of 19 to 30, give them long-term attachment to the workplace, build skills, and lead them to, you know, become productive members of society. So we want to wish, with council's approval, PC Urban all the best of luck with this, and we're in full support of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. There aren't any questions for you? Thanks for making the time to call in tonight. Speaker number five is Konstantin Papas, founding member of Friends of Victory Square. Konstantin, are you on the line?
I am.
Please go ahead. You have five minutes to speak to council.
Thank you. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council. My name is Konstantin Papas. I'm an owner of the Papas Building on the corner of Hamilton and Pender Streets, which is situated adjacent to Victory Square Park for one half of one block on the Hamilton Street side. I've been a member of the Friends of Victory Square since its inception in 2002, and our group has worked closely with the principles of this redevelopment properly and some of its planning. I support this project. The proposed building is a beautiful architectural structure with an attractive storefront and entrance, which has been thoughtfully designed to allow the sun to fully shine on Victory Square on certain days of the year when it would be obscured. Unfortunately, the Papas Building will be affected by the shadow, but I feel that this is a small price to pay for the overwhelming positive attributes that this project will bring into the area. This project also nicely complements the current new project under construction at the old post office on the corner of Hamilton and George Streets, which will also bring a much-needed positive influx of workers into the area. These new workers will undoubtedly contribute to the socio-economic status of the area. The Friends of Victory Square have worked closely with the development concepts of art and lighting for the front of the building, the alley, the corridor to Victory Square, and to Victory Square itself. We have also been involved in discussing the implementation of current social as well as historical elements into the park with a developer, who has been very accommodating. I'm pleased that the front area, as well as the adjacent alley bordering the new building, will be handsomely illuminated and that the corridor between the building and Victory Square can be highlighted. There will also be many related beneficial projects to Victory Square itself, which will further honour our war veterans. This project will also strengthen and complement the Chinatown corridor and will socially and economically support the adjacent BCC building on Pender Street. There's a wonderful restaurant and bakery open to the public at the school, which is operated by the students. Currently, the park is enjoyed by students and residents on sunny days and even not-so-sunny days, and this amenity would also be extended to the new workers in the area. In my opinion, this redevelopment project will be a major socio-economic benefit to the park, which will enhance the daily lives of workers, residents, students, and visitors alike. It will complementarily uplift the entire surrounding area. Thank you.
Thanks so much. There aren't any questions for you, but thanks for speaking tonight. Speaker number six is Nathan Davidowich. Nathan, are you there?
Hello. Yes, do you hear me?
I can hear you just fine. Please go ahead, as you know you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm going to speak about the Canby Street traffic plan. Oh, there is no plan, of course. Staff has not presented anything. You know, the street is now two ways, which is way better than the previous one-way. You know, the street is now two ways, which is way better than the previous one-way. However, other intersecting streets are proposed to be changed to two ways, Cordova and Dunsmere, but without a proper plan, the public will suffer. There is a bus service, but no proper plan to speed the buses that travel at an average speed of about ten kilometers per hour. On some blocks on Cambie Street, parking is available twenty-four-seven, even during the rush hour, parking is there, and during the rush hour, there's a bus every four or five minutes. When I asked for a left-turn green arrow to help the number seventeen Oak Bus access from Southbound Cambie Street to Eastbound Nelson and the Cambie Bridge, my request was denied by staff. Everyone wants to speed the buses, but canceling bus stop is the only thing done by the staff, and according to the transit union, it's not, it's not really speeding up the buses anyhow. It's penalizing the passengers. The bus terminus at Lawwell Park for the North Shore buses will have to be moved when the new art gallery moves in there, or what is the plan? We need to know now. We have to decide where all these buses from the North Shore are going to park. Stadium Station, main entrance on Beatty and Dunsmere, does not have bus service even. It's the only Skytrain station with so many accessibility issues, and no one wants to do anything about it. For many years, the streets around Victory Square were used as a strip car and bus terminus. Why not have a proper terminus there again? So all the local Vancouver buses, especially routes five, six, seventeen, and fifty, could stop there. The bus driver wanted because there is a washroom available for them at Victory Square, and they don't need to go inside Vancouver Community College to use the washroom. And, you know, so this is just another example of, of not having proper transportation plan for, especially the downtown area of Vancouver. Well, thank you very much for listening.
Thanks, Nathan. There aren't any questions for you. Speaker number seven, Colin Rose.
Hello?
Hi, Colin.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead. You have five minutes to speak to council.
Hi. Thank you to the Deputy Mayor and Council for taking time to consider my perspective on the proposal. My name's Colin Rose, and I'm calling in tonight to support the development of five fifty Cambie. I own and operate a digital marketing firm, and I've been working in the area for about six years now. We just moved offices this summer, so I have a fair amount of firsthand experience looking for office space in the area. We spent several years growing up in the Dominion Building at Victory Square, and we've grown to a larger location now on Carroll and Pender. And I walk past a development site on Cambie from my apartment downtown every day, and just so many up-and-coming, growing businesses like mine that I've come to know working in this area, and I just, I personally love working here because it's very central and still has so much character and history around it. So generally speaking, I think there is many areas around here that are underutilized, and five fifty Cambie being one of them, so I wanted to take the time to voice my support here today because by animating these tired zones to, for a term from the architect that was presenting earlier, I think that this whole area will benefit. I did want to mention in particular, I'm an ardent supporter of preserving facades while modernizing the lot, so I really appreciate this being included, just the fact that the whole area will be refreshed and injects new life into the streetscapes, whether it's public walkways and lighting or new retail opportunities for the economic recovery for Vancouver. So the more we work to improve this iconic neighborhood, the safer it becomes, which is an important daily consideration for my team here as we commute back and forth from the Skytrain to the Chinatown area. So to summarize, because of the added office space, street-level retail, public improvements, I'd like to encourage council to approve PC Urbans proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much, Colin. There aren't any questions for you? I'll call speaker eight, Alberto Braglia. Alberto, are you there?
Yes, I'm online.
Please go ahead. You have five minutes to speak to council.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak in this forum. My name is Alberto Braglia. I live in the area, very close to the, to the rezoning location, and I am opposed to this, I'm not opposed to the zoning per se, but I'm opposed to this particular proposal because of its dimension and position. The building is, would be twice as high as the other office buildings just next to it, and it's far larger than any other building in the same area. Moreover, it's also very close to at least a dozen, I think, residential buildings, including where I live, and because of its sheer size, its lush footprint, and its location, it would permanently deprive hundreds of homes of their view over a number of iconic landmarks in the area, including Victory Square, Canada Place, the Vancouver Lookout, the Dominion Building, and also a chunk of the Bernhard Inlet of the North Shore Coast. This view is one of the reasons we decided to buy our home in this area, and I think that's very much true for many of our neighbors. I provided a picture in support of my argument that shows the expected impact of the building in its current design from my point of view, from my balcony, but that's a reference that's fairly similar to many other units in the area, many, many other homes in the area. And as you can see from, from the outline in white, I don't know if the picture is on the screen or anything.
It is. The picture is up on the screen.
Okay, thank you very much. As you can see, the building would be really big, really close by, and its size would immediately cover all these important landmarks that we really enjoy from, to, to be able to see from our home. On top of that, I'm also wondering that such a tall building, being all covered in metal and glass, would also generate a lot of reflections all around, and I've seen shadow studies, but I haven't seen large reflection studies, and I'm worried of situations where beyond the standard, you know, annoyance of reflections in your eyes, you have, we have a situation like last summer's heat wave, and reflections create even more light and heat concentrated on our homes. So in essence, I am essentially worried that allowing this kind of development will impact negatively ours and our neighbors' properties. The view, as I said, is one of the main reasons we moved into this, into this home, and a good view also means property value, of course, so that would impact our property values, the value of our property, but it would also impact, in a sense, our quality of life because it would deprive us of things we really enjoy to be able to see. I would also point out that many of us these days work from home, especially in the tech, in the tech department. I work in technology, my wife works in technology, most of our friends work in the technology department in different tech companies in the area, and let me guarantee you, most tech companies went to embrace working from home and are not going back. They don't plan to go back, which means they don't need such big offices anymore. So just wrap these things up, I'm not opposed to the zoning per se. I agree that it can improve the overall value of the neighborhood. I'd rather, I'm rather opposed to this particular design. For instance, if the proposal were for a smaller building, similar to what's already there in kind of size and height, and generally sort of more aware of its impact on, on the immediate neighborhood, I would have no considerations, no, no problem supporting it, but as it is, it, I am really worried that the impact would be negative. Yep, that's, that's all I had to say, and I thank you again very much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. There aren't any questions for you, and we will move on to speaker number nine, who I understand is here in person, John Van Dyke. And I'll just give you a moment to come forward to the podium. Actually, Clark, do we have any procedures or protocols we have to follow? Okay, good. Thank you. And, and I'll start your timer, your timer's just to the right so you can see your time. You have up to five minutes. I'll start your timer now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Council, and staff. My name's John Van Dyke. My wife and I have lived in the, the area for over ten years, eight years where we were in the forensic towers at, at Abbott and Expo Boulevard, and then last year, we bought a unit in five thirty-one Beatty, which is the seven-story building behind this proposed development. So on the graphic that I have there in the top left, that tiny little building, the seven-story, that's where we live. That's, I managed to find a pic, they actually included that one picture in their submission, but other than that, they ignore it. So this appears to me to be the last development in this, like maybe called the cross-town Beatty area. So, you know, you had International Village, forensic towers, you had all the old buildings redone on Beatty, there's a parcade beside us, I don't think it's going to go anywhere, and the office tower at Dunsmere and Beatty, but this is the last one that is, is, is left, and the neighborhood, if you want to call it, is kind of a mix of new buildings and newer buildings and heritage buildings. So I'm opposed to this current proposed building as there's been no consideration given to the reduction of the natural light that's going to, to, to us residents in the building. And if we go to the next slide there, I asked some of my fellow residents, I gave names because I think it's always good to have people's names up there, but this is what they're going to see when they look out their windows. Not the red, the red I've highlighted, but that's what you're losing when this building goes up, you know, and they talk a lot about shadow studies and all this razzle-dazzle graphics and everything, but really, this is what we see when this building goes up. And, you know, there's going to be a, a, a big loss to us in natural light that's coming in, and for a lot of them, there'll be a loss of sunshine, and then you'll see that in some of the comments that have been given to written submissions, the, some of the opposed ones, they make mention of that. The other thing that is not discussed is the heritage building is really just an old two-story brick building, you know, and, and they're making so much of it, and, and I love heritage, but let's not be, let's not buy into this argument that preserving an old brick wall is somehow justifies a development like this. You know, if you go by those buildings, you'll see the, the inside, the structure, there's gorgeous wood fir beams in there, timber decking, but all that's gone because they want a parcade there. So, you know, it, it, just get rid of the, the heritage building, get rid of the walls if you're going to do that, or save it, you know, save those wood beams that you see in Gastown and Yailtown and other areas. So moving on, trying to hopefully stay in five minutes here, I wanted to leave you with three issues here. One, the city staff referral report, there's two errors in that. Page six, when they talk about building separation, they state will have no effect on the privacy and sunlight to us at five thirty-one Beatty Street. Fake news. Page seven, shadow impacts. No shadow impacts to five thirty B during the day. During the day, well, how can you, when else do you get shadow impacts? You're not going to have it at night, but how can you not say there's going to be no shadow impacts? When you look at those red squares there, we're going to have shadow impacts. So again, you know, something's not right here. Number two, in there, the developer says, yes, he received feedback from us, but didn't address our concerns. And number three, why do we need a seventeen-point-three-five FSR, an increase of two-hundred-and-fifty percent over the current one? Like, why? If we, if you reduce the ten-story building down to three stories, reducing forty-two-thousand square feet, and your FSR is in fourteen-point-seven-one, a two-hundred-percent increase, they should be happy with a two-hundred-percent increase. So in conclusion, I would like council to give consideration to our concerns and don't be overshadowed by, you know, the eight million dollars that you receive in revenue and, and the claims that there's a shortage of office space. When you walk down the street, there's four lease signs up everywhere. So there's so many arguments made on this pro, but let's look at our concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I was waiting for you to finish your last sentence there, and there aren't any questions for you, but thank you for coming to speak to council. Now, I'll, I'll ask the clerk, are there any other speakers on the line at the moment?
Yes, Chair, there's one additional speaker.
Okay, and there's one additional speaker. We'll hear from the speaker. If I could ask the speaker to state your full name and whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes. Could you please state your full name, and, and we ask you to state if you're a resident of Vancouver or not?
Absolutely. Counsel, my name is Scott Woodworth, and I'm a resident of Vancouver and currently an owner and resident at five thirty-one Beatty Street, basically right underneath the proposed structure, shall we call it.
And please go ahead. You have five minutes to speak to council if I didn't make that clear.
Great. Good evening, council. Thanks for having me. I appreciate the time. I did submit written comments, but in watching the proceedings, I saw that those are not read out, so hopefully some of you got a chance to read them in advance. I've been a renter for three years and then an owner for eight years, for a total of eleven years here at five thirty-one Beatty Street. I live and work in downtown. I work at a local public school in the West End, and I love calling Beatty Street my home. Amidst all the constant and sometimes challenging activity, I can always still see why I chose to call this my home here in downtown Vancouver. I often find great value simply sitting on the patio of our shared outdoor sun garden space at the building, which conveniently faces the structure proposed here at Cambie Street. I also enjoy afternoon sun in my bedroom, which also faces Cambie Street. The recent application to develop at five three-four and five five-zero Cambie leaves me feeling less than optimistic about my future and the home in, in the city that is potentially not considering residents or families hoping to reside in downtown. I'm realistic in knowing that there'll always be noise, construction, and development close to me, but the drawings that we've all seen today speak a new story. Conveniently, the structures don't look as large as they actually will be in most of the drawings. You saw in the prior speaker the actual size of how large this building will actually be. The small side of it will still tower over the largest building around it. In the rear of our building, which faces Cambie, there is a patio garden. Nobody will ever use that patio garden again, and the plants will die. If the development at five three-four, five fifty Cambie moves forward, the building's shared sun patio will ironically never even see sunlight again. If somebody struggles with minimal sunlight, I also worry about the loss of light year-round to all the residents around the area. It's not just the building that's going to be completely crushed by this structure, it's everybody around. I strongly urge the city to consider the steps they're taking in allowing further developments of this size and magnitude to take place in the neighborhood. This is a huge adjustment to the zoning and simply caters to more skyrises in an area which is not known to have these structures. We heard a great amount of positive feedback from the Friends of Victory Square. I think it's amazing they were considered in this project, but I do ask, could this project not go forward being half the size and still being a massive structure? It would still meet all the needs that everybody showed for all their little votes of support, but it does not have to be this size. This is something we will all see from everywhere around Vancouver if you have a view of the skyline. I strongly urge people to think about the human element in this neighborhood. I ask anybody with voting capabilities to please take a moment to reflect on the impact your decisions in adjusting the zoning to meet corporate needs would make on the many people who call the area home. would make on the many people who call the area home or a breather from the suffocating towers of the financial district which already look like this. There's no reason to adjust or alter the current zoning so that people's homes and lives are being used as pawns in this proposal. I also want to mention, there were some fantastic comments from people in the area, and I agree, lots of people in support about all the different needs being met. As the speaker before me mentioned, I was part of a group that met with a group. We were mentioned, but none of us were in support. So I wonder how many other people were in support other than the Friends of Victory Square? My guess is many like us were not in support. Thank you. I appreciate your time, and I hope that we cannot be tricked by the fact that we're keeping four brick walls to build this massive structure and block many people's enjoyment of the city. Thank you, council.
Thanks very much. There aren't any questions for you? I'm just going to check with the clerk. And clerk, are there any other speakers on the line?
No additional speakers, Chair.
Okay, and seeing that's my second call for speakers, I'm going to do a third call for speakers. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 94189 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the livestream. Any speakers in the council chamber or in the building who'd like to speak and haven't, please come forward. And, Counsel, I'm suggesting we take a five-minute break as per our process to give speakers a chance to call in. It's 7:52, so we will come back at 7:58. Just because it's almost 7:53. 7:58, we'll be back. Thanks. Thanks. All right, and it's after 7:58, so we are back, council. And I'll ask the clerk, are there any other speakers on the line of this item? Could the clerk please confirm? Or are there any other speakers on the line?
No speakers, Chair.
Thank you very much. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close receipt of public comments and move on to hear closing comments, ask further questions of staff, and to make a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments? Just waiting to hear from the applicant?
No, we don't, do not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And does staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments from staff, thank you.
Thank you. And, Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing, just one. Thanks. All right, so, Counsel, do we have a motion? Oh, sorry, Counselor Carl, just make sure your microphone's on there for you. Sorry, and put you on the queue.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm happy to move the recommendations.
Do we have a seconder?
Counselor Boyle.
I saw Counselor Fry first, but I'll try and give equal time to people who are
No problem at all.
who are tuning in virtually as well. Thank you for being there. And is there any discussion on this? Seeing no one on the queue, I will call a, oh, Counselor Kirby Young?
Yeah, I wonder if there's an opportunity to follow up with a question to staff at this point.
Well, you can do that through points of information now.
Can I do that through a point of information?
Uh, go ahead.
I wonder if I could just ask staff if they could comment on the concerns raised by particularly the last two speakers with respect to the diminishment of sunlight. The buildings behind, I believe it was at 531 Beatty was one of the ones that was cited with respects to shadowing on those buildings.
Thank you, Counsel. This is Carl Stamper, Development Planner. And just the, the shadowing is cast northwards towards the park. 531 Beatty is the southeast. Between 10 to 4, the shadowing stays mostly in the forward arc away from 531 Beatty. I believe what that is, the line referring to the shadowing was.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat that last part? You said the shadowing stays, and I didn't catch that.
Yes, so the shadowing is cast northwards towards Victory Square.
Right, okay.
In that direction. And 531 Beatty is slightly, is behind the building, to the southeast at an angle. So the shadowing between 10 to 4, as we typically measure shadowing, doesn't affect the building in an appreciative way as we calculate it. In terms of the daylight issue, we have standards that we apply between towers of, between two residential towers because they're occupying the building more continuously than an office building of 80-foot separation between towers and between a residential and commercial building, which is not occupied as continuously and intensively as a residential building. We have a standard of 60-foot separation. So this building has achieved that standard, and it isn't casting shadows onto the building behind it because the shadows are cast forward towards the park. So the park was more our area of concern in our examination.
Okay, thank you.
We also have horizontal angle of daylight policy which governs views outwards of buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. Is that all your questions, Counselor Kirby Young?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Seeing no one else on the queue, Counsel, I will take us to a vote. Please vote on screen. And Counselor Bly, did you require a vote assist?
Thank you, in favor.
Okay, there we go. And I'll ask the clerk to bring up the vote. And that passes unanimously, Counsel, with no one in opposition. Thank you. And now we will move on to item number three. Just give everyone a moment. And I'll just give staff a moment in case we have to change over here. Okay, sorry about that. There we go. All right, Counsel, we're on to item number three, CDI, or sorry, CD1 rezoning, 8804 Ossler Street. Does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on item three? Seeing none, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by DA Architects and Planners to rezone 8804 Ossler Street from MC1 Industrial District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building with 38 strata titled residential units and ground-floor commercial use. A height of 24.8 meters and a floor space ratio of 3.05 are proposed. The General Manager of Urban Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing: six pieces of correspondence in support and three pieces of correspondence in opposition, and this represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thank you very much. And any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council? Please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 94189 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the livestream. There will be an opportunity There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list also. And we have Tess Monroe, Rezoning Planner, Rezoning Center, Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability, here to present the application. I see Counselor Carr on the queue.
Yes.
Counselor Carr?
Yes, thanks. Since we have no speakers on our speakers list, I move to waive the presentation.
Do we have a second for that?
Counselor Boyle.
Thanks, Counselor Boyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, thank you very much, but counsel has chosen to waive the presentation. Counsel, we don't have any registered speakers, as Counselor Carr had noted. It is, just, just give me one moment. But I also ask if the applicant team has a presentation? Would like to present?
We don't have a presentation. Sal Johnson from DA Architects, thank you.
Thanks very much. Counsel, do you have any questions to either this, either staff or the applicant? And I'll note, this is the only chance you'll have to ask the applicant questions. Okay. Seeing none, I, again, I'll call a second and third time here for additional speakers. And then, as is our practice, we'll take a five-minute break, counsel, to make sure that any additional speakers have an opportunity to call in. So, again, if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to counsel, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 94189 pound before the close of the speakers list in five minutes. A phone number will be tweeted out and made available also on the live stream, and any speakers in council chambers, please come forward towards the podium, and, and we will hear from you in five minutes. Just one moment. Before we take that break, I just wanted to confirm that there are no speakers currently on the line. Are there any speakers on the line, clerk?
Clerk, no speakers, Chair.
Thank you very much. So, we'll take a five-minute break, and we will come back at 8:16, counsel.
Yes, there is one additional speaker for this item.
Thanks very much. And I'd ask the speaker, please state your full name, and we ask you also to tell us if you're a resident of Vancouver. Just yes or no is fine.
Hello, my name is Huijun Yan. I'm a resident of the Marple neighborhood. I'm calling to support this new project, this 8804 Ossler project. I used to, um, had my education in EBC, and I've lived in this neighborhood for a long time. I used to work as a construction estimator, and now I'm a full-time realtor. I'm sure everybody knows right now, the real estate market is that hot, and the only reason is because of the lack of supply. So, I think for like big cities like Vancouver, go vertical is the only way to resolve the supply issue. So, I'm support, I support this project, and I support like, basically lots of new development, which can, you know, provide lots of future housing, especially like for, for people like me, like young professionals, that we, we don't need like a big houses, big duplex, like a small, small one-bedroom, two-bedroom condos would do. So, I, I just wanna say that I support this project. Thank you.
Thanks very much. There aren't any questions for you? But thanks for calling in. I'll ask if there's any other speakers on the line?
No additional speakers, Chair.
Okay. As, as no public comments, or I should say, as few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 p.m. today, I suggest we now close receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff, and making a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
Act of Mayor, counsel, we have no closing comments, thank you.
Thanks. Does staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments, thank you.
Okay, and does counsel have any questions for staff?
No, move the recommendations, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby Young, do I have a second? Thanks, Counselor Carr. And do we have any debate on this item? Counselor Hardwick? Go ahead.
Thank you. So, 38 strata titled residential units, say no more. Again, we continue to do these kind of rezonings, which just will continue to inflate land values. And again, the underlying policy on which these decisions are being made is flawed, and so I will be opposing.
At all, Counselor Hardwick?
Yep.
Thanks. Seeing no one else on the queue, I'll call the vote. Please vote on screen. Counselor Carr? No worries. Did you want a vote assist? Thanks. And that passes with Counselor Hardwick in opposition. And now, counsel, we're on to our final item of the evening, and it is CD1 rezoning, 750 Southwest Marine Drive. Does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on item four? Seeing none, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Proscenium Architecture and Interiors Incorporated to rezone 750 Southwest Marine Drive from I-2 Industrial District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District, to permit the development of a seven-story mixed employment building containing light industrial, office, and retail space. A height of 32.2 meters with additional height for rooftop amenity and a floor space ratio of 5.00 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing. Five pieces of correspondence in support. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 p.m. today.
Thanks. We have Joseph Tohill here from the rezoning, or rezoning planner from the Rezoning Center, Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability, here to present the application. Oh, Counselor Carr is on the queue.
Yes, thanks. Yes, as, as we have no speakers on the list to speak to the council on this matter, I'm moved to waive the presentation.
Do you have a second? Do we have a second for that motion?
And Counsel Bly?
Okay, and all in favor, please say yea.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none opposed? Thank you very much, but we won't be needing the presentation. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, it's Byron Charter, Charter Development. I wanted to...
Please go ahead if you have a, if you have a presentation?
Thank you very much for considering a proposal this evening. We do not have a presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, are there any questions to staff or the applicant team? I'll just remind you that this is the only opportunity that counsel has to ask questions of the applicant. Okay, I don't see any. If there are any speakers for this item, I understand there are no registered speakers, but if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to counsel, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 94189 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. I'm not seeing any. I'll ask the clerk if there are any speakers on the line.
There's one speaker online, Chair.
Okay, thanks. And, and I'll ask the speaker, just before you begin, if you would please give us your full name, and just a yes or no whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver. Please go ahead.
Yes, I'm a resident of Vancouver. My name is Dan Jordan. Good evening. I'm here to speak tonight in support of Charter Development's application for 750 Southwest Marine Drive. I'm a commercial real estate broker who focuses specifically on the strata office market, and I'm thrilled to see a project like this come before you for consideration. I've worked in the field for over 15 years, and over that time, I've never seen a shortage of supply of strata office space like we're experiencing today. The vacancy for this kind of product is, is close to zero. I have many clients in search of just this kind of product to purchase and set up their businesses, but unfortunately, with a, a lack of available supply, a lot of those purchasers need to look to other municipalities like, like Burnaby or Richmond to set up business due to a lack of available options. I would love to see those businesses stay in Vancouver, set up shop in South Vancouver, and, and have residents in the neighborhood be able to have businesses close to home. The space as proposed by Charter is exactly the kind of product that a lot of my clients have been looking for. It's well-designed, high-quality, close to transit, has amenities that employees and employers would find very appealing. So, I, I hope this project gets the green light from council tonight, as I believe it's one that will be highly sought after once it's built. Thank you.
Thanks very much. There aren't any questions for you? I'll just... I'll just ask the clerk if we have any other speakers on the line? I'll just ask the clerk if we have any other speakers on the line? I'll just ask the clerk if we have any other speakers on the line?
No additional speakers, Chair. No additional speakers, Chair. No additional speakers, Chair.
Okay, so I'm gonna call a second and third time now Okay, so I'm gonna call a second and third time now Okay, so I'm gonna call a second and third time now for any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council. for any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council. for any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council. Please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, Please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, Please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 94189 pound before the close of the speakers list. followed by participant code 94189 pound before the close of the speakers list. followed by participant code 94189 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak after the five minutes is up. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak after the five minutes is up. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak after the five minutes is up. And we will come back at 8:35. Thanks so much. And we will come back at 8:35. Thanks so much. And we will come back at 8:35. Thanks so much. Okay, council, we're back. And I'll just ask the clerk if we have any speakers waiting on the line?
No speakers on the line, Chair.
Thank you. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff and making a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No further comments, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Does staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments. Thank you.
Thanks. And council, do you have any questions for staff? Just waiting a minute. Thank you, Counselor Carr. Do I have a second or? Counselor Frye, thanks very much. Any debate on this item? Seeing none, I will advance us to the voting queue. Council, please vote on screen. Okay. Are we ready? And I'll ask the clerk to bring that up. That passes with unanimous consent and no one in opposition. Thanks. And just a moment, council, I always like to just double-check. Just checking, is we're in a quasi judicial body with the clerk? But I am, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I heard Counselor Hardwick seconded by Counselor Kirby Young. All in favor, say yay.
Yay.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much and thanks to staff as well.
Great work, council today.
Thanks, clerk.
Been a long day. Good night, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone. See you tomorrow.